I'd like to call this meeting to order. Lauren, would you please read the statement?
This is a meeting of the Vernon Township Council for May 29, 2014. Adequate notes of this meeting has been provided to the public and to the press on January 8, 2014, and was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-7.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cade.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzuto.
Here.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Here.
Council President Lynch.
Here.
Will you please all rise as Chief Randy Mills leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Detail. Footed. Huh. Freeze it. Off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Ho.
I'm going to ask everyone to please remain standing for the moment of silence in remembrance of Memorial Day for all the soldiers, sailors, airmen, coastguardmen, and marines who have served this country and gave the ultimate sacrifice to the nameless people who are not on plaques or tributes anywhere, who are still serving this country with distinct honor.
Hi Daddy.
Thank you. Okay, uh, tonight we have a presentation and I did not hit the button. The cops are... And what would happen if I did? Would one more cop come upstairs then at this time? No, everybody's here. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the Police Department Award Ceremony. May I have Chief Randy Mills and Captain Steve Moran come forward for this, please? Show's yours.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, Council, I present to you the Vernon Township Police Department. We have 29 of our 30 members here tonight, and one that's not here is in the hospital. And for anybody who's interested, Hardeston Township has officers out, so the town is protected, right? If it happens close to here, we're in good shape. Okay, I want to start by thanking Captain Moran, who put a lot of work into putting this together. We haven't done this in a long time, so you're going to hear some dates from quite a while ago. This isn't something that happens every year or every other year, so some of these dates you're going to hear back, 2004, 2005, some awards, and we have a lot to do tonight. You'll see, we tried to put together, Captain Moran put together, a process that hopefully will make this honor the people that deserve their awards tonight and also make sure that we're not here till midnight. So what's going to happen is I'm going to start off by saying the type of award that we're about to give out. Then I'm going to list the names of the officers who are receiving the award. Then I'll describe what the award is, the qualifications, and then I'll give a brief little synopsis of each particular incident as to what the officer did or didn't do to deserve the award. So that will start with our life-saving medals. Corporal Scott Wallach, Corporal Charlie Reed, Patrolman Harry Russo, who's not here tonight, Patrolman Brian Patterson, Patrolman James Higgins, Patrolman William Terrell, Patrolman Emmanuel Rivera, Patrolman William Muttz, and Corporal Derek Skidary. All please come forward, please. Life-saving medal is an act performed in the line of duty which through disregard for personal safety or prompt and alert actions resulted in saving a life. Corporal Wallach and Corporal Reed, please step forward. On November 7, 2011, Corporal Scott Wallach, Corporal Charles Reed performed force-aid and CPR which saved the life of a 39-year-old woman. Present their awards. Okay, you can step back. Okay, Patrolman Harry Russo's not here. He performed, on August 1, 2009, he performed CPR and used a defibrillator to save the life of a 55, 54-year-old male. Will Patrolman Reed and Patrolman Patterson step forward? On February 26, 2012, Patrolman Charles Reed, Corporal Charles Reed and Patrolman Patterson performed CPR which saved the life of a Vernon woman. Patrolman Higgins, step forward. On September 12, 2011, Patrolman James Higgins performed CPR that saved the life of a 30-year-old male. Patrolman Rivera, Patrolman Terrell, and Patrolman Muttz, please step forward. On November 4, 2014, Patrolman Emmanuel Rivera, Patrolman William Terrell, and Patrolman William Muttz administered first aid and performed CPR which resulted in saving the life of a 67-year-old male. Patrolman Skidary, step forward, please. On June 27, 2012, Corporal Derek Skidary, while in court in Hardeston Township, assisted the Hardeston Township Police in performing CPR that saved the life of a male. That concludes the life-saving awards. We have a couple civilian service awards. A highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with some degree of hazard to life and limb to the nominee, or where death or injury to a third party was averted. Civilian Service Award, Rich Carson Jr. and Corporal Scott Wallach. On April 22, 2010, Corporal Wallach responded to the McCapee Library where he met with Rich Carson, who was performing CPR. He assisted with CPR and used a defibrillator to save the life of a 76-year-old male. Would Karen Starr step forward? Most of you heard about this, this was pretty recent. Karen Starr is the manager, or was at the time the manager of the PNC Bank in Vernon, is now the manager of the bank branch in Sparta. Karen Starr and Heather Carver. Heather Carver couldn't be here tonight, her child's getting a recognition, I understand, and that's more important for her to be there. On March 21, Karen Starr, the branch manager of PNC Bank, was alerted by her employee, Heather Carver, of a suspicious male who was approaching the bank with their face covered. Ms. Starr greeted this person at the door and denied entry until he uncovered his face. The circumstances were suspicious enough and the employees were alert enough to call the Vernon police to check it out. Corporal Reed was able to locate this person walking down the roadway, and it led to the arrest, and with the help of Detective Sergeant Sean Tall, interviewing this person, the probable cause was obtained to charge this person with attempted bank robbery. And I'll say something tonight that even Karen Starr doesn't know, because we just found out last night, something that was suspicious from the beginning, the New Jersey State Police, after our arrest, did an investigation into this person, and last night he was charged with the bank robbery of the Wantage Branch on Route 23. So congratulations, Miss Starr. Gallantry Straw Medals, Corporal Gettard, Patrolman Stephen Rivedo. For an act distinguished achievement, for an act of distinguished achievement in the arrest of a person or persons who was a major threat to the welfare of the community and/or the officer. On April 19, 2014, Corporal William Gettard and Patrolman Stephen Rivedo responded to a call involving an emotionally disturbed juvenile that was armed with a knife and threatening a family member. Officers arrived on the scene and the male teenager fled on foot. Officers pursued him and caught him in a wooded area. The teenager's then advanced towards the officers with the knife demanding that they shoot him. Corporal Gettard and Patrolman Rivedo used extreme restraint and were able to bring the situation under control and restrain the juvenile without having to use lethal force. These officers are being commended for this action. Canine Commendation Medal. Awarded for outstanding performance through the coordinated team effort of Officer Master and Dog that resulted in the successful apprehension of a serious criminal or the rescue of an endangered person. Corporal Gettard has been the canine officer with this department for 13 years. He's a respected member of the law enforcement community throughout Sussex County. He's being awarded for the responsible, he's being awarded for being responsible for the successful apprehension of several criminals and the rescue of several endangered persons. Corporal Gettard and his canines have been recognized for their hard work, are being recognized for their hard work and dedications. Narcotics Enforcement Medals, Sergeant William Fisher, Detective Sean Fitzgerald, Patrolman Sergeant Fisher, please step forward. Sergeant Fisher was assigned as a detective to Sussex County Narcotics Task Force for 18 months in 2004 and 2005. He worked numerous successful investigations throughout the county and several high-profile cases in Vernon Township. This type of work involved long days, undercover work, surveillance, preparation of search warrants, all of which take its toll on a detective as well as his immediate family. For this work, he is being commended. Detective Tall and Patrolman Gentle, step forward. Detective Sean Fitzgerald and Patrolman Stephen Gentle have displayed exceptional initiative and capabilities in the area of narcotics enforcement. They have developed and implemented investigative skills that have resulted in eleven arrests for distribution of controlled and dangerous substance and the confiscation of over 30 pounds of illegal narcotics. Their work has also resulted in the seizure of two vehicles and over $33,000 in cash. Detective Sean Fitzgerald has just returned from a confidential temporary assignment to a multi-jurisdictional task force which was targeting our narcotics problem at its source. He developed valuable narcotic intelligence and made critical contacts to address the heroin problem within our township. For this, they're being commended. Patrolman Charles Reed, Patrolman, Corporal Charles Reed, I'm sorry, Patrolman Brian Patterson. Meritorious Service Medals. A highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with some degree of hazard to life and limb to the nominee, or where death or injury to a third party is averted. Corporal Reed, please step forward. On April 29, 2013, Patrolman Reed responded to a structured fire in the Great Gorge Village condos. He arrived on scene prior to any other emergency personnel. Upon observing how fast the fire was spreading, he began to evacuate all the residents, some of which were unaware of the danger. Patrolman Reed saw the immediacy of the situation and without protective equipment or concern for his own safety, he secured the safety of all the occupants. Patrolman Reed is being commended for his actions, selfless actions, and professionalism. On November 21, 2013, Patrolman Patterson responded to what was reported as a brush fire. Upon arrival, he observed that a snow blower adjacent to a residence had caught fire and had spread to the residents. Without concern for his own safety, he moved the snow blower away from the structure and evacuated the residents. He then assisted in extinguishing the fire with a garden hose. For these actions, he's being commended. Detective Sergeant Sontall, Detective Jason Hall, Detective Keith Curry, Detective Sean Fitzgerald, Corporal William Gettard, Patrolman David DeHart, Patrolman Ron Kumaris, Lieutenant Brian Jernik, and Captain Stephen Moran, please step forward. Exceptional Duty Medal for a highly credible accomplishment bringing public acclaim to the officer, the department, and to the police profession as a result of training, devotion to duty, or public service. Wow, we almost don't have enough room for this one. On August 30, 2012, then Detective Corporal Gettard and his canine Amber were in Highland Lake section of the township, an area that had been plagued at the time with a rash of burglaries. His personal observation of a suspicious male led him to an inquiry of the subject. He was soon joined by Detective Curry and Detective Tall and Detective Hall. Their exceptional work at the scene of this stop and the wooded area nearby, as well as extensive follow-up investigation, led to the resolving of several residential burglaries. For that, for this, these officers are being commended. Please step forward, guys. Our officers responded to a report of an armed robbery with shots fired at the Marketplace Deli. The response by all department personnel was quick and professional. The tireless investigation by Detective Tall, Detective Sergeant Tall, Detective Curry, Detective Fitzgerald, and Detective Hall resulted in the arrest of three suspects. Because of their hard work and dedication, not only was this robbery solved, but the suspects have since been connected to a series of other robberies in other jurisdictions. Gentlemen, please step forward. For this work, they're being commended. Patrolman Kumaris, step forward. Patrolman Ron Kumaris is being commended for his work in the area of traffic enforcement. He has received the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award for the highest number of DWI arrests for three consecutive years. He was instrumental in the department's ability to obtain a number of grants, click at a ticket, drive sober or get pulled over, and distracted drivers. For this work, he's being commended. On February 4, 2012, while working in a traffic detail, Patrolman DeHart observed a vehicle matching the description of the one used in a recent burglary and took down the license plate number. He initiated his own follow-up investigation in conjunction with the Detective Bureau. His work resulted in the arrest of a subject for a number of Vernon burglaries. This investigation led to further burglary charges in multiple other jurisdictions. For this, he's being commended. Could I get retired Sergeant Tom Zabriskie to step up, please? Could I get Lieutenant Jernik and Captain Moran? Come over here, please? Actually, you could stay right there. Detective Tall, Detective Sergeant Tall, Lieutenant Jernik, retired Sergeant Zabriskie, Captain Moran, all being recognized for their work while assigned to the Detective Bureau for over a decade. These officers successfully investigated over 1,000 cases involving homicides, sexual assaults, robberies, burglaries, and narcotics. This team also covered the juvenile officer and high school resource officer, the sex offender registration program, and the computer crime assignments. The property and evidence function for the department has been not modernized to a barcoded system during their watch. Their expertise in crime scene analysis, evidence collection, interview interrogation was invaluable to this department. These officers are so being commended. Okay, if you thought that one was long. Honorable Service Medal. Lieutenant Dan Young, Corporal Charles Reed, Lieutenant Brian Jernik, Detective Sergeant Tall, Corporal Ken Kazicki, Detective Keith Curry, Sergeant Keith Kimkowski, Corporal Derek Skidary, Patrolman Ron Kumaris, Captain Stephen Moran, Retired Detective Sergeant Thomas Zabriskie, Detective Sean Fitzgerald, Patrolman Dave DeHart. Gentlemen, as with the last one, I'm going to read the narrative, and when I'm done, please step forward to receive your award. Lieutenant Young is being commended for his work as administrative sergeant under his current title, and under his current title of administrative lieutenant. Has initiated and developed numerous programs that have greatly improved the quality of service to the township. These include the current report-writing system, our automated mapping system, our automated license plate reader, our e-ticket system. His exemplary handling of this department's records and communications has proven invaluable. For this, he's being commended. Sergeant Kimkowski, Patrolman Kazicki, Patrolman Skidary, and Patrolman Kumaris, please step forward. On January 18, 2011, the diligent work of Sergeant Kimkowski, Patrolman Kazicki, Patrolman Skidary, and Patrolman Kumaris resulted in the apprehension of two suspects at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. Their observations made, the observations made and the actions taken solved nine vehicle burglaries and resulted in the recovery and return of numerous items of personal property. For this, you're being commended. Patrolman Reed is being commended for his work in 2011 and 2012 uncovering a mortgage fraud scheme involving homes in the township. He worked with the Sussex County Prosecutor's Office and the FBI, which resulted in several charges of fraud, forgery, and theft, and led to numerous other investigations in other jurisdictions. What this person basically was doing was finding vacant houses and renting them out as if they were his own. This became a very large case with a lot of FBI involvement. For this, you're being commended. Corporal Kazicki, Detective Curry, Detective Sergeant Tall, Lieutenant Jernik. You can step forward. On April 30, 2008, Corporal Kazicki and Detective Curry uncovered a business burglary in progress while checking on a suspicious car just after midnight. The suspects fled on foot and one was apprehended after a foot pursuit and after resisting arrest. Detective Sergeant Tall and Lieutenant Jernik followed up on this investigation and resulted in the second arrest, and they were able to secure a conviction for burglary on both suspects. For this, they are being commended. Corporal Kazicki, Detective Fitzgerald, Lieutenant Jernik, Detective Sergeant Tall, Retired Sergeant Zabriskie, Captain Moran, please step forward. On August 17, 2008, a homicide investigation into a death of an adult outside Regent's Hotel was conducted by Corporal Kazicki, Detective Fitzgerald, Lieutenant Jernik, Detective Sergeant Tall, Retired Sergeant Zabriskie, and Captain Moran. Evidence uncovered by these officers focused their investigation on three suspects in Port Jervis, New York. After a fast-moving and intense investigation involving numerous search warrants, interviews, and interrogations, the forensic evidence led that these three were arrested and charged with homicide within 17 hours of the crime being committed. For that, these officers are being commended. Patrolman DeHart, please step forward. Patrolman Kumaris, please step forward. On April 19, 2012, at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, Patrolman DeHart was on routine patrol in a neighborhood when he noticed the interior lights of some vehicles were on. With that, he quickly turned around to check on a car that he found oddly parked earlier and observed as he entered the neighborhood. He observed that this vehicle was now driving for the area. He stopped the car and with the assistance of Patrolman Kumaris, a subsequent investigation led to the discovery of 10 vehicle burglaries and to the recovery of all the property and the arrest of the two suspects. For this, you're being commended. Okay, you can step down. Now we have our Veterans Service Medals. Will the following officers please come to the front? Sergeant Keith Kimkowski, Corporal Charles Reed, Patrolman James Higgins, Patrolman Harry Russo, Patrolman Stephen Gentle, Patrolman Ronald Kumaris. For those in the audience that don't know, we often get asked, what are these things above our badge? And that's what happens here tonight. For every award that you've heard up until now, and including these awards, the officers will receive a medal that, in their dress uniform, is above their badge. Day-to-day, they don't wear a uniform that has a metal badge on it, so you don't see it, but when they're in full dress uniform, as they get multiple of the same, there's different pins that are put in the center. These gentlemen up here are all veterans that have seen active duty in a hostile area. Sergeant Kimkowski, please step forward. Sergeant Kimkowski, Desert Storm and Desert Shield. Corporal Reed, step forward. Corporal Reed, Desert Storm, Desert Shield. I should mention Sergeant Kimkowski was in the Army, Corporal Reed was in the Marines. Patrolman James Higgins, step forward. Patrolman James Higgins served in the Navy during Desert Shield, Desert Storm. Patrolman Gentle, step forward. Patrolman Stephen Gentle served in the Marines during Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom. Patrolman Kamaris, step forward. Patrolman Ronald Kamaris served in the Army during Endury Freedom and Iraqi Freedom. Officer Russo could not be here with us tonight. He also served during Desert Storm and Desert Shield. Why don't we give them all one more round of applause? Okay, at the end here, we have awarded some letters of commendation. The officers will not be coming forward, I'm just gonna read a brief narrative. This is a letter of commendation that is placed in their personnel file. Corporal Kenneth Kazicki and Corporal Charles Reed were involved in a 2004 case involving the arrest of a DWI, resisting arrest, and aggravated assault. This case resulted in a law enforcement case law that was in favor of these officers. What that means is that the case got challenged, taken to another appellate court or higher, and there's actually case law, or other courts will make decisions based on the fact pattern of this case, and it was a positive one for the police. So for that, you're commended. Thank you. Patrolman Rovetta was being commended for his contribution of time, energy, and for his fundraising efforts as a participant in the Police Unity Tour. Steve has raised thousands of dollars in 2012 and 2014. The Police Unity Tour is an event where officers are sponsored to ride bicycles from all over the country to arrive in Washington, DC for Police Week. The primary purpose of the Police Unity Tour is to raise awareness for law enforcement officers who have died in the line of duty, and the secondary purpose is to raise funds for the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Museum. For this, you're commended. Detective Sergeant Hall is being, Detective Jason Haw is being commended for his work organizing and running the Special Olympics Torch Run from 2003 till the present. The Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics in New Jersey is a statewide campaign coordinated and managed by all divisions of law enforcement officers and officials throughout the state. Through their efforts, events are conducted year-round by the law enforcement community to raise funds for the New Jersey Special Olympics, serving athletes from all over the state. It just so happens that tomorrow morning is the Law Enforcement Torch Run in Vernon Township. For this, Detective Hall, you're being commended. Okay, we have a couple stork pins. Patrolman Stephen Rovetta, on March 23rd, 2012, and Patrolman David DeHart, on July 25th, 2013, both had the honor of assisting in the birth of two new Vernon Township residents. They performed as trained and assisted all involved parties with the emergency medical treatment and are hereby being commended for it. Patrolman William Terrell is being commended for observing a vehicle that matched the description on an open-spend broadcast, that's State Police Emergency Network. It was a radio broadcast that was put out to area towns looking for a particular vehicle wanted for a shoplifting out of Franklin. He located the car and stopped it, and with detectives linked the driver to several high-end alcohol shoplifting cases in Vernon. For this, you're being commended. I have one other award to hand out. Sudine, please step forward. This is the Hazardous Duty Award. Working in a department with twenty-five guys and one female now can't be easy on a daily basis. So for this, you're being commended. I also want to give one more round of applause. This whole thing was put together by Captain Moran from beginning to end. He coordinated all this. It was a lot of work, and I'm sure he's glad it's done.
You're probably wondering why I'm here, but the chief can't give himself an award. So I'd like to read to you, this award being presented to Chief Randy Mills, nomination by Captain Stephen Moran. Chief's award is as such. Chief's achievement is an active achievement of a chief of police, bringing public acclaim to the department and to the police profession throughout programs to further police efficiency or contribution to the welfare and advancement of the profession. Chief Mills has made a substantial improvement in his short time as chief to improve the service and the safety to the township and our officers. He's updated our rules and regulations, he's instituted and revised numerous policies and procedures, he's implemented a new uniform policy, and added the new BDU uniform, which is more practical for everyday patrol, and by the way, was financed almost entirely with seized funds from illegal narcotics arrests. Approved the award, he has also approved the award policy and reinstituted this awards program that has not been in place for over ten years. Thank you for doing that, Chief. In addition, Chief Mills has upgraded our weapons capabilities, our training to better protect against the active shooter threat. He's pushed to increase the number of officers, and you've all read how successful he's been with that. As a matter of fact, we have recently had the honor of hiring two young Vernon residents, a young lady and a young man who are presently in the academy, will be joining our force in the very near future, and I can assure you that Chief Mills had a lot to do with that. He's also improved the professional appearance of our police headquarters and the department vehicles. The revised vehicle policy, cleanliness of vehicle, emblem placed on the cars, painted headquarters, he used community service workers, and lettering on the front door, and many, many others. For the outstanding job you've done, Chief Mills, in a very short period of time, I present this to you on behalf of your men.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Police Department before they go, for all the hard work that they do, for keeping us all safe, and always doing it in a professional way. We are all very grateful for your duty. Thank you. Okay. Before we move on to tonight's proclamation, I would like to make a public service announcement. We'll take a five-minute...
That's a good idea.
We'll take a five-minute recess. Motion? Any opposed? Five-minute recess. Would you like to close meeting back to order? Before we move on to tonight's proclamation, I would like to make a public service announcement. The county has sent a notice to the township that on or about July 2014, they will be closing Route Town Road, Route 517, for approximately three to four weeks for repair to Bridge V-05. The detour will reroute traffic down Route 94 to Route 23. If you would like more information about this closing, please visit the township's website. A notice with a link to a map of the detour is posted on the township's homepage. The township will update residents as more information becomes available. Thank you, and now on to tonight's meeting, proclamation. The township will be hosting Vernon Day Celebration on June 18th, Sunday, June 8th, 2014. I'll be all right, thank you. Yes. Missy and her staff have been working diligently to ensure the celebration goes off without a hitch. I'm going to read the proclamation. Missy?
Whereas the township is a seventy-one square mile community, with three miles of water and sixty-eight square miles of land that some twenty-four thousand neighbors call home. Whereas Vernon Township is unrivaled collection of neighborhoods, each with its own geographic flavor and historic personality. Together, we form a dynamic community with an exemplary volunteer spirit. And whereas Vernon Township began holding Vernon Day over a decade ago to offer residents the opportunity to meet friends and neighbors from the top of the mountains to the flats of Vernon Crossing, to the walkhill road, and everywhere in between. Whereas Vernon Day 2014 will be held, rain or shine, Sunday, June 8th, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at beautiful Maple Grange Park. Whereas Vernon Day 2014 is sponsored by the Vernon Township Department of Recreation and Community Development, and promises to be a wonderful family fun day. Activities for the day will include a 5K and a one-mile race beginning at 9:00 a.m., followed by an afternoon of fun, including bouncy houses, face painting, local artisans, and vendors. The day will also provide opportunities for neighbors to meet their local civic groups. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Brian Lynch, and Mayor Vic Marata, and the Vernon Township Council, do hereby proclaim Sunday, June 8th, 2014, as Vernon Day. We hope to see all of our residents come and celebrate the greatness of Vernon Township. Thank you very much, Missy.
Okay, before we start going to public comments, I'm going to ask that when people are speaking, if you have an alternative view, please keep it to yourself until it's time for you to come up and speak in public, and let everyone have their time, and respect the council when they're speaking, and not to interrupt them. May I have a motion to go into public comments? So move. Motion made by Councilmember Cadish. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any members of the public would like to speak? You're more than welcome to.
Hi, Jesse Palladini, Sunset Ridge. I just wanted to say that that really makes me proud, to see the Police Department being recognized like that tonight. But I'd like to thank somebody else tonight, and she'll probably get mad at me for doing this, but, you know, while a couple of people get up month after month after month talking about beautifying the town center but never doing anything about it, I'd like to thank Bev Budds, because if any of you did not know it, she called me up last week, three days after I had surgery, and I was unable to help her with anything, and she said, "The parade is coming, the parade is coming, we've gotta make the center of town look nice." And single-handedly, she went out and she purchased all the flowers and the flags and everything else, and when I was finally able to come out for the parade, I was very proud of what she had done, not only in the town center, but she grabbed a hold of Doreen Edwards, and they decorated the Historical Society Building and Church Street, and everywhere I look, I see her flowers and her flags, and I just wanted to recognize Beverly for that act of kindness that she did.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. I just...
Name and...
Oh, name Bruce Zabreski, Church Street resident. I would just like to offer my support for the purchase of the Camp Glenwood property. I think it's a great asset to the community. I'm very familiar with that property. I had purchased the Summit property from Camp Sussex, and my children were counselors there when they were young, and I know the amenity that that camp would provide for the township, in terms of its tenants' courts, it has a beautiful theater, an indoor basketball place, swimming facility, and it's just an absolutely beautiful jewel for the community that may not be appreciated immediately, but I think generations to come will thank this council for making a good decision. So I just, as a taxpayer and citizen, I just want to give my support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Seeing that there are no other members of the public wishing to speak, may I have a motion to close public comments? Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor's report.
Briefly, the report this evening is as follows. At the direction of and through the work of the Environmental Commission, invitations were sent to all homeowners within the circumference surrounding the Camp Sussex ground, and invited this Saturday for a walking tour of the property, and an opportunity to hear the vision that the Environmental Commission has for this project. I do believe we'll have a good turnout. Certainly, any of the council members who would like to be there and hear it are welcome to be there. I would be cautioning you, of course, that a quorum could be a problem, because it's not really a public meeting, but nonetheless, your Environmental Commission is working very, very hard to, in fact, bring the information to the people of this community. And when we come back on June 9th, I think you will be impressed with the amount of information and the research and the work that has been done by the entire team. Secondly, I would like to tell the council, I think some of you know, but maybe not, some time ago, a ethics complaint was lodged against your mayor. That complaint was lodged because of the existence of the Vernon Vibes television program. I'm happy to tell you that the local finance board informed me yesterday by letter that, in fact, all of those charges have been found to be... in fact, all of those charges have been found to be dismissed. There has not been a violation of ethics in any way, shape, or form. Very proud on Vernon Vibes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. This time, we have a report from the Liaison Committee to the Vernon Township Board of Education. Councilmember Cadish?
We met on, uh, May 19th. It's the first time that Jean and I had attended this meeting, and the meeting was both positive and informative. In attendance presenting the board and the school officials were Charles Maranzano, Stephen Kepnis, Lori LaPera, Cindy Alberger, Robert Hughes, Matt Shea, and Jean and myself. Dr. Maranzano presented a nine-minute video to be viewed as an example of what Vernon could create to introduce newcomers to the Vernon community. A discussion followed how communication could be enhanced between the town officials and the school administration. The board had proposed in January to transfer the child study team property to the township. Board expected a response from the township at this meeting. The BOE is not interested in paying for hookup fees for the sewer. Mr. Kepnis will recommend to the board to move forward with that transfer. A discussion continued exploring shared services ideas between Vernon and the school district, which included evaluating computer technologies, street sweeping, snow plowing, grant writing, and sharing possibly a new bandwidth. They're all just possibilities, and I guess where we're continuing conversations that have taken place previously. We were introduced to a five-year strategic vision and plan, which we included with tonight's report. The clerk has copies of it, and it's distributed to you. Self-assessment of resources, strengths and weaknesses, will be initial step. We discussed the notion of, of closing a school. While the student population has decreased over a 10-year span from 5,256 students to current 3561 students, representing a 32% change, the faculty has decreased only 20%. All buildings are currently necessary and fully utilized. For example, the child study team is now housed in Lonsbury Hollow. While enrollment has fallen, number of classrooms still remains the same. Likewise, they pointed out that no budgetary increase has taken place over the last four years. We next explored how this school system could contribute to the community. Our suggestions included adult education programs for seniors, and the board suggested a state-of-the-schools presentation at a future town council meeting. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Any questions from the council members? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, we're, uh, next we, we have approval of minutes. Regular meeting minutes of April 28, 2014. May I have a motion to approve the April 28, 2014, regular meeting minutes? Move. Motion made by Councilmember Cadish. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rizzuto. Any questions? Additions, deletions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cadish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch?
Yes.
Thank you, character.
Work session minutes of May 5, 2014. May I have a motion to approve the May 5, 2014 workshop meeting minutes? Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
Move. Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cadish. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cadish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch?
I abstain due to not being there. Items for discussion. Next on the agenda, we have a discussion on the capital bond ordinance. Mr. Mayor and Administrator Zuckerman, do you have any comments?
We sure do. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
We'd love to hear you.
You all have in front of you a proposed bond issue, and I'm sure that as you all looked across it, you've had it now for quite some time, you will recognize that there have been some changes made. Those changes were generated by conversations that were held between my office and individual council people, as well as a review by our CFO, Elka Getter, and of course, Mr. Zuckerman and myself. And since the last time we talked about it, we've had the good fortune of being awarded a $200,000 grant from the New Jersey DOT to, in fact, repair, resurface, and rework the Breakneck Mountain Road. So that has changed the final number somewhat. I would say to you that I'd like to call out a couple of things that are, I think, pretty important, the changes. First and foremost, as you see, the connection fee to be paid to the Vernon MUA and the Sussex County MUA together total approximately $215,000, almost $216,000. That obviously has to be paid. Everybody has to pay, even us, and I do believe that in that number is the connection fee for the child study team, which is presently being occupied by our Historical Society. Another change that took place, you will recall in the last suggestion, we, at that time, had $60,000 in the bond for fire turnout gear, which would have purchased about 30 units. We had anticipated with the money left over from the FEMA grant that we might be able to get FEMA to allow us to use the excess money to purchase additional turnout gear. That's not going to happen, and so the amount that we are recommending in this bond is $90,000 for fire turnout gear. That number is generated by a survey that was done of the existing turnout gear in our four firehouses and the need to, in fact, replace it. A turnout gear set is approximately $2,000, pants and coat, and as a result, we're recommending, as you can see, 45 new sets of turnout gear to be distributed based upon need in each house, the survey that was given to us by the four fire chiefs. Unchanged is $200,000 for ambulance chassis. You know, we have discussed it on many occasions. Our plan is to retrofit the ambulances of both the Vernon and Glenwood Pochuk ambulance with new chassis. The actual ambulance boxes are still very, very usable, and we'll save ourselves easily $50,000 per unit by doing it that way. This $200,000 would allow us to do two chassis this year. The plan is to do two more next year. We also intend this year to begin a project that has been on our radar and planning books for easily 10 years or longer, I'm told, by our animal control officer, and that is an expansion of and improvement to our animal control building here for the benefit of our animals as well as the people who work there. We really don't have a quarantine area, which we really should have, and there are other things that frankly need to be done. You'll see in that, this bond issue, $27,000. The actual project probably will run to $40,000, but the animal control department or the animal welfare has a donation fund, which will be contributing a balance, $13,000 to $15,000, to do the job. So that's going to actually, as it has been in the history of Vernon Township, a joint government and public donation project. You will see that there's $100,000 for the municipal building roof repairs. As you will recall, last year, we had thought about putting a peak roof on this building, and the architect and the engineering estimates were $500,000. When we actually brought our professionals in and they looked at the structure of this building, the possibility of putting peaked roofs on the two flat areas was next to impossible simply because of the way this building is built in trust. So the amount of money that's here is for a membrane-type roof, and it'll be done in those areas where it's indicated rather than doing the entire roof. That's why it's a substantially less amount of money. We've already had a conversation when we did the budget concerning the actual need for a secure impound building for the police department. Our thought is a pole-type building to be constructed in the area where the fence is now. It's actually been dictated by the state for a long time and ignored by the Vernon Township over the years. With the changes that we're making in the way our police department is functioning, this is one that's high on their list. There also is money in this bond for scoreboards at Maple Grange Park, and then, of course, improvements to township properties. The improvements to township properties include a myriad of things, gentlemen. Completion of the basketball court fencing, the parking area that will become adjacent to where the basketball court is. We actually plan to create parking adjacent to the basketball court and also on the higher level, where an entrance will come in off of Maple Grange Road, and then that driveway from the top parking will come down to the lower area. We believe that we'll be able to pick up about 90 more parking spaces, maybe more. It's critical. You'll see it on Vernon Day when you go there. We need to improve the parking at Maple Grange. There's not enough. It's just that simple. On the second page, you'll see the international truck, and that is the sister to the one that we, you were wise enough to fund last year. We've taken delivery of that truck, by the way, and this is the second one that we talked about at that time. You also will see balance of roof for DPW on the second page, and I think that that warrants an explanation. Last year, we put $150,000 in the capital improvement fund, the operating part of our budget, to repair the roof of the DPW building. And actually, we took bids, and we got two of them last year. And one of them was for $150,000, and the other was for $260,000. And you will recall that in one of my mayor's reports, I pointed out to you that that range was so wide that our township engineer, Corey Stoner, as well as our financial people and myself, were not comfortable. And it's a good thing that we didn't take the low bid, because as it turned out, the low bid last year was only half correct. It did not include insulation. It simply was a bid for the metal. This year, the bids came in at approximately $260,000, if my memory serves me right now, and as a matter of fact, we have checked, that is what it should cost. And so you will see, we have the $150,000 from last year still available to us, but to finish the project, we need to add 120,000, and that's why you'll see in this balance of roof DPW. Of course, the last Breakneck Road, I've already spoken to. That project is earmarked at approximately $590,000. It is our intent to resurface, to mill and resurface from the intersection of 515 to the intersection of 638. I think we can do that with the money that we have, and of course, repair the catch basins, cross drains, and guardrails on Breakneck. And then, lastly, $50,000 of the Section 20 cost, which is legal bond costs and the like. Are there any questions?
Yes. Is this going to be a bond anticipation note?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
The other thing I have is, when speaking with the fire departments, are they happy with, not happy, is, is 45 sets going to be covering what they are going to need?
Based upon the survey that I was given from the four houses, that will cover those, those turnout gear that no longer meet OSHA or NIOSH...
Okay.
...requirements. Now, does that mean that we're good forever? Obviously not, because that, that kind of gear gets used, and it gets worn out, and it gets torn, and it gets...
Compromised, sure.
At some future date, do not be surprised if we come back because we need more. But for today, as I understand it, these 45 sets will help us meet, and then we don't have to fear any kind of an inspection. Am I, the firemen are here.
The, uh, just for the council's edification, the, when the turnout gear is used at a fire, in a lot of cases, when it meets extreme heat levels, sometimes it becomes compromised, and although you could buy this gear today, have a fire tonight, and it could be rendered useless because of a fire. So we do have to be prepared to spend money on that. As far as the street sweeper, from the day if and when this bond is adopted, how long will it take for it to get a street sweeper?
A year.
A year?
Yes. And I'm glad you asked that question, Mr. President, because we are presently renting a street sweeper, as I'm sure you people know, and it's at present, what did David tell us, 18?
Eight thousand. It's 8,000.
No, it was more than that. It had, we had it a month, and it was, it was...
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, okay, and we're not done, okay? So as you recall, when we were doing work sessions even last year, talking about the sweeper, you know, and we talked about renting, we all thought that, you know, maybe $36,000 to $40,000, we could rent the sweeper. The truth of the matter is, that was grossly lower than it's actually turning out to be. But we are renting one, and as was the case last fall when we rented one to finish the Cliffwood Lakes project, when you rent those things, they aren't the newest ones off the showroom, and the one that we have, while it functioned very, very well for the first two weeks, we had to send it back to get it repaired. So, you know, they're out sweeping the street, and people are saying, "Mayor, oh, they're sweeping my street, thanks." And then all of a sudden, people are saying, "How come my street didn't get swept?" So the point I'm making to you is, it's a good stopgap measure, okay? But we have had demonstrated here two models of street sweepers that are also vac trucks. And frankly, looking at them and how they function, and with the amount of storm drain work that we will be doing now as a result of the repair and upgrading of our secondary and tertiary roads, I would recommend that it would, it would be a wise purchase for us to have our own street sweeper. I even hesitated originally, as you will call, recall, Mr. President, about the limited use of it, but frankly, with the combination truck between the vac truck that we have and this one that can sweep and vacuum, I think we'll get a whole lot more use out of it, and as a result, productivity will go up.
I think one of the things that we learned from Hurricane Irene is that the catch basins need to be cleaned in a, in a...
Oh, no question.
...in a orderly fashion and, and timely fashion, because we've seen the damage that it causes, and these guys on the road department do a wonderful job, but they, they do need their equipment to do their job.
That's true. Now, I, I would like to, if I may, just point out, and I've done this at earlier meetings, since July of 2011, when this new form of government came to pass, if you exclude the purchase of the sewer system and you exclude the emergency money that was needed for Irene, this government has not borrowed one penny. And in fair balance, the administration in the spring of 2011, in fact, had taken bond anticipation notes to meet some of the needs for fire equipment and road equipment. In this timeframe, we've paid down $5 million of our debt. And so I want to put it in this proper perspective again for yourselves and your contemplation, as well as for the public. Debt is not necessarily bad. Managed debt, particularly in light of the economic situation that we have now, and you will recall that the last bond anticipation note that we rolled, we were able to secure $6.25 million for, at an interest rate of less than a half a penny, .042 percent. Now, we all know that bond anticipation notes, every year, the interest rate adjusts, but I want to tell you, and I want to make this public so that you understand it and the public understands it. The financial plan that Mrs. Getter, Mr. Zuckerman, and I have put together is designed that any money that this community borrows will never go to permanent bond. It will be paid off before the bond anticipation note reaches its maturity, and we will be able to do that with roughly the same amount of money in the operating budget each year that we presently are paying down on our, on our debt. It'll fluctuate some, and nobody can see exactly what's in the future if an emergency occurs, okay? But I assure you, absolutely assure you, that these numbers have been gone over again and again with our bond counsel and with our auditors and with our professional in-house people, and I am comfortable in telling you that it will not have a negative impact on the tax rate of Vernon Township.
The last thing I have, and I know that I spoke to you before about it, is there a need for the AR-15s for the police department?
Absolutely. There's no question in my mind that there's a need for it. I can tell you that I, like you, was skeptical in the beginning until I began to talk to security people. If we have an active shooter situation in this community, a likelihood is that our police officers are going to be facing that kind of firepower. As a matter of fact, you heard of the one murder... As a matter of fact, you heard of the one murder that took place not too terribly long ago on the mountain? Well, the weapon that was used by the murderer was an AR-15. I believe that our police are professional, and they know what to do with it. And long rifles are for their security as well as ours. God, I hope we never use them. I hope we never need them. We all hope we never need them. But if we do, and they're not there, then I ask you, is $7,000 a lot of money to spend to save someone's life? Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question. I did go over this with Len, with the mayor yesterday. And a question I have on the sewer connection fees, did I hear you say correctly that the child study team building was included in that?
I believe we anticipated a yes.
Because one of the original documents we have, it only showed those numbers correlating back to the DPW and the town
I understand that. You're talking about one EDU. The hookup fee for one EDU is $2,400.
I understand.
Okay, I'm just giving you the numbers so you have them.
But I'm still asking, I'm just asking because I still have, you know, I
Yeah, no, 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 no.
I did not care his desk like Brian would.
I'm not offended by your question. I just want you to know that there's enough there to do what we have to do.
But I did, I just wanted to go back over that. That's all, I just wanted to know if I understood that.
Sure. The other part of it that I want to share with you is that the EDUs for the, for the, this building and the DPW haven't been confirmed yet. We've only gone with an estimate.
Okay.
They could be lower. They might be a little bit higher. Whatever it is, we'll work it out.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? I understand. We look forward to seeing this ordinance.
I'm not done.
You're not?
No, I am not. The reason that we asked you folks to put this on for discussion is, we are now sitting here at the end of May. In order for us to make a decision and bring this in the form of an ordinance, we have to direct our bond counsel to do the legal work. I would ask you this evening, by vote, to direct this office and our CFO to contact our bond counsel and prepare a bond ordinance for the June 9th meeting.
I have one more question. You did say that the turnout gear is for all four fire departments?
Yes, it'll be distributed across the four based upon their need. Some of the firehouses don't need a whole lot, because they've been doing it out of the money that they get yearly. Some of them haven't been able to do that. But we will replace them based upon the need, the wear, the problems with the -- and we'll leave that up to the fire chiefs as the surveys they turned in.
Okay.
How does the council feel about directing the mayor to go ahead and have the bond counsel draw up the necessary documents for the bond ordinance?
It's acceptable to me, and I'd be pleased to make that in the form of a motion.
I'd second it.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto, second by Councilmember Murphy. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Caddish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will be prepared on the 9th to present the first reading of an ordinance that will cover the issues that you have before you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, for the consent agenda, resolution authorizing an award contract for LifeLock. As many of you already know, as a result of, again, litigation in 2013, the township purchased LifeLock for employees. This resolution authorizes the township to renew the LifeLock contract for another year for those employees who are currently enrolled in the program. Resolution 14-80, resolution refunding tax overpayment. As a result of an error on the part of the landowner payee, the property taxes were overpaid on several properties in the township. This resolution authorizes the refund of those overpayments. Resolution 14-81, a resolution opposing A2280 and companion bill S1305 mandating installation of cameras on certain police vehicles. A2280 and S1305 make it mandatory that all municipalities, including Vernon, must have video recording systems or cameras in their police vehicles. This mandate usurps the local control on this important issue. While Vernon presently is utilizing cameras in police vehicles, it is Vernon's option to continue to do so. If A2280 and S1305 become law, the township will no longer have the ability to make that determination, particularly if the costs associated with the cameras, camera use rises significantly. Resolution 14-82, authorizing use of the New Jersey State Contract Program for the purchase of folder inserter machine for the use by the Vernon Township Tax Collection Department. This resolution authorizes the purchase of a folder inserter machine for the tax department. The township's current machine is functionally obsolete. In purchasing a new machine, the township eliminates the need for personnel to handfold and stuff tax bills and other notices, thus freeing up staff for other important tasks and making a more efficient use of our resources. Before we discuss any of these, may I have a motion to adopt resolutions 1479 and 14-82?
Through 82.
Through 82.
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second? Second by Councilmember Wetzel. Are there any questions or comments? I have a comment. Resolution 14-81, the resolution opposing A2280 and companion bill S1305. If this were any other piece of equipment, or any other thing that we were going to purchase or were going to be forced to purchase, I would probably vote in favor of this resolution. But I don't have enough confidence that when push comes to shove during budget problems, that a township would do the right thing and make sure that their police officers are taken care of, although ours are, right now, taken care of, and our police department is given the best equipment there is. I can't, in good faith, say that it's always going to be like that, because it's Vernon Township, and we could politicize a walnut in this town. And I could see this becoming an issue, like it was a few years back when the DPW workers had to come and give a presentation during a council meeting to try to keep themselves from being laid off. I understand why this resolution is on. I don't like onerous mandates without funding. And quite honestly, if it was, like I said, any other type of legislation to buy any other thing other than safety equipment, I think that somebody needs to say, "No, you have to do this, because it's the right thing to do. And we're not going to let you be foolish enough not to do it." That's my opinion. I understand the premise behind the resolution being here, though. Can I have any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to speak in opposition to your comments, Brian. I understand completely where you're coming from. However, having had significant experience not only here, but 15 years with a local Board of Education, it is typical of the state to bait the hook and give limited funding, albeit the reason is very, very logical, very, very desirable. And then, at the end of that period, funding is either withdrawn or expires. Hence, we're left with an unfunded mandate. Now, I believe that the township has done the right thing, and that's our responsibility. The decision as to whether to invest in cameras or any recording devices should remain with the local elected officials, and it should not come from a state mandate. I just don't like being told what to do, okay? It's part of my makeup, and, you know, should the council vote otherwise, I can understand it. But this is typical of the actions of the state. And I should point out that the total municipal cost associated with the enactment of this bill will likely be higher than the municipal share of revenue raised by the increased fee on DUI convictions. Hence, you know, what we're getting is only part of it. Now, this may not really affect us to any great degree. To me, it becomes a question of principle. I just don't like having the state tell us what we have to do and saying, "Here, put this on the end of the hook, and when you bite, then we're going to snag you pretty good."
I agree. You know, I would be hypocritical, in retrospect, to vote against this, because I, all other resolutions that are opposing mandates without funding, I voted in favor of not allowing that to happen. I, you know
That's why they pay the big bucks, Brian.
Yeah, I'm floating in it right now. Anybody else have anything?
May I? I just would like to state strongly, this council, the council before it, has been very active in providing our police with the kind of equipment that now the state sees fit to mandate with other people. This really is a discussion of principle, because we've already made our decision. You people have done a great job in that respect. And I can tell you anecdotally, or for that matter, through the records of our police department, how those cameras have saved, helped, and in fact, been a tremendous benefit in situations that were they not there, our patrolmen may very well have been in danger. So you've already done the right thing. And the reason I'm saying what I'm saying is, sometimes the people at home watching this meeting on television don't get the full benefit of it. It's like, what, you don't have, you don't want the police to have cameras? We have cameras in every one of our patrol cars, and all of the equipment that's necessary. We've done what needs to be done. So wherever you go with this resolution, obviously, is your decision. But I think it was important to, for the record, state, we've done our duty.
I agree, Mayor. And the point that I make is, as I said, I've been, had experience with it. I've seen, you know, people come before the assembled body and say, "Why are you terminating this individual?" Well, because funding wasn't there. Well, they gave you this money. Well, yes, they did, and they stopped it after a three-year period. And unless the elected body can be assured of being able to continue funding, it can only act in a responsible way, either hiring or terminating. There is no in-between. And on this particular situation, I think it's, again, a case of an unfunded mandate. It's typical of the state. This is not something new, you know, and I'm not going to argue the benefit of it, because I did vote for it. But I will not vote for a situation that allows this principle to continue.
I understand that we have this equipment.
Mm-hmm.
And there's nothing that's ever going to stop us from doing the right thing.
You understood my
But we're not going to be in office forever.
You're right. That's correct. We are not. And the responsibility that we have seen and the decisions that we have made based upon, you know, the necessary and the required, and the educated advice, is something I would hope future councils would do as well. I can't legislate for somebody who is not here, and I don't expect anybody to tell me what to do as well.
There were meetings where people couldn't agree what time of the day it was, let alone on something like this.
No.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Caddish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
I had to, it's, wouldn't hear the end of it from you if I didn't, or me.
You know my viewpoint on the police.
This isn't a discussion about what's right and wrong for the police department at all, because we're always going to do the right thing for the police department and all of our emergency services. Okay, a public hearing, reading of the ordinance, is ordinance 1408, ordinance amending the Chapter 94 of the Administrative Code of the Township of Vernon Division of Police. This ordinance changes the wording in Chapter 94 of the Administrative Code, consistent with the current form of government. May I have a motion to go into public hearing on this?
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilmember Wetzel. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Caddish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes, anyone wish to speak on this? Please come forward. All right, we're all going to have to take numbers. It's on this ordinance, Gary.
Actually, there's something I just want to make sure that everybody knows about, and you guys might be covering it later, but tomorrow also is the groundbreaking for the Veterans Cemetery, so I thought just
No, Saturday.
Saturday.
It's Saturday, but are they sure somebody mentions that? Thank you. John Aragon deserves it.
Okay, may I have a motion, seeing that there's no one coming forward? May I have a motion to close the hearing?
Move.
The public hearing. Motion made by Councilmember Caddish. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Caddish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 14-08?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I'm sorry, second. Okay, second by Councilmember Murphy?
Councilmember Caddish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance 14
Thank you.
Can I have one more time, please? This is a question for municipal attorney. Does this ordinance need a 20-day waiting period like all ordinances, or does it go into effect immediately? It's an amendment to our Administrative Code.
I think it's 20 days.
I just wanted to be sure, because there are some that go into effect immediately. And the police asked me because of the rules and regulations, which now falls to the mayor when we can do that. That's why I'm asking for direction.
I have a few things. I'm going to just
I think 20 days, I'll confirm that with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going to go a little bit out of order here for a second at the end, because I want to, I want to ask the council, the municipal attorney and the clerk. During the week, I've been going over the mortgage foreclosure registration ordinance that has been, the amendments made to the state statute on this. And what this does is it makes the lien holders of all foreclosed properties responsible for any, to abate any nuisances that arise from it, meaning broken windows on the houses, grass that grows out of control, property going to decay, that adds to the blight to a community with unkempt houses. And the state seeing this as a problem, and one of the main issues that a council has to face during its tenure, that is the toughest subject to talk about, is property maintenance in the township. How can you go and tell somebody how to take care of their property? Well, the foreclosed homes are not being taken care of by the banks, okay? This ordinance will force the banks to upkeep the property and maintain it to a level that is consistent with the township code, the zoning ordinance. What I'm going to ask the council to do is to consider this as an ordinance What I'm going to ask the council to do is to consider this as an ordinance. I'm going to ask our attorney if he would please start to draw up an ordinance on that and work with Lauren. And what happens is, is the banks have to register with the township clerk. Then if the property becomes unkempt or things that need to be taken care of, the banks are required to have that work done. And if they don't have it done after having a notice sent to them from the township, they can have fines leveled on them. And also, if it requires the township to spend money to do these maintenance things on properties, the township can put a lien on the house. Now, we are not in the business to acquire foreclosed homes, and I realize that, but we can't make other people's property values go down because of foreclosed homes not being kept up in the right way. So the other thing I'm going to ask is if the mayor and the township clerk would take a look at our Administrative Code and start to make a list of the necessary changes that are going to be, needed to be made for the wording of the code like this one here that we had tonight for chapter 94. I know that I spoke to Lauren a few weeks ago, and she had already started a list, am I right? And I would like that, that's not going to be something that is going to be finished by the end of this year. That is going to be an arduous thing to take care of, but we do have to take care of it.
One comment that I have repeatedly heard as a council, people coming to me, they say, you know, "I have this house in my neighborhood next to me or nearby, and it's not being taken care of. Isn't there something you can do?" And I have to explain to them that we can't. You really look a little bit foolish because the average taxpayer figures that you do have the authority or the authority to set up an ordinance to handle this.
Right.
For them, for you to tell them that it's difficult and for them to understand it, it's even more difficult. So I am very, very happy that we are taking this first step in looking at an ordinance to see how we can resolve this problem. I'm sure it's not only in this community, but many, but because of the fact that we have so many summer homes and the ability for people to walk away from some of these because of their, the fact that they're low-end homes, if you so to speak, you know, it only hurts the people who live near them, and that's certainly something that we don't want to see happen.
Yeah, this is only going, unfortunately, we can't have any issue with people that have, you know, that own their homes that just don't keep up with the other people on the block.
No, but these are foreclosed.
But these are specifically foreclosed homes. Any other comments? Councilmember Wetzel?
I just have two quick comments. First of all, I want to congratulate Kevin Kelly and Megan Ward for being selected as the best law firm in Sussex County by the New Jersey Herald.
Stuff the ballot box.
We didn't vote.
Congratulations, Ken.
Thank you.
And also to thank the VFW and anybody else who is associated with that parade for a wonderful, wonderful day. I mean, the crowd was outstanding. I think it was the biggest crowd I've ever seen.
I think the VFW even had something to do with the weather.
It might have been, but the finish line placed by the tracks was packed, jam-packed, and the comments coming from the crowds were great. I enjoyed myself immensely, and I commend anybody and everybody who was involved with that parade because it was excellent, excellent. Pat?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Martinson, for bringing up the issue of the groundbreaking for the cemetery. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there. I have a previous commitment, but certainly this community, this mayor...
I'll be there.
And this council has been in the forefront of working with Mr. Aragon and the veterans, Vietnam veterans, to establish this site. I, too, would like to point out that I have been exonerated. I was found innocent for what I was accused of, but I was found innocent. I don't know who accused me, I'm finding that out, for appearing on Vernon Vibes.
Yeah, me too.
I was also given a mild slap because I happened to introduce our campaign treasure and said, "If anybody happens to have any reason to give us any support, please see this gentleman." Since I did that while my feet were firmly planted on township property, that was a no-no. Had I been able to jump high and say it at the same time, I think I probably could have documented all of that. Again, I don't know who made these accusations, but I'm in the process of finding out. Thank you.
Before I pass on, I'd just like to thank Beverly Buds for putting all the flowers, the pretty flowers, in the town. There can't be enough of them, if you ask me. Dan?
I'm hoping that we can forward a resolution at the next meeting in favor of having the prosecutor consider the issue of Narcan. I think it's an important issue, and I think we should push forward as a council to support it.
For you of Narcan.
Just a piece of backup information.
First of... Hang on, hang on.
I'm sorry.
I do believe that that is a great idea, but I think the council needs to know that we're about to get a new prosecutor. Mr. Weaver's term is about to be over, and there's a new prosecutor that's going to be appointed, so we may have to do it twice, but just so you're aware.
Dan? That's it? Gene?
Does anyone know who to contact at the VFW? I had a couple residents approach me asking who they would contact to help the VFW, whether it was with helping with donations or whatever.
Robert Constantine, and if you'd like, either stop by or give me a call tomorrow. I'll give you his telephone number. And since the issue is up, I'm going to take the opportunity to tell you that discussions have begun between Bob, who is the gentleman who was at the microphone at Veterans Park, the master of ceremonies, and Vinizino, the chairman of the MUA. I do believe that they'll get that worked out. There's been a tremendous outpouring, at least on my Vernon Friends Facebook page, about people who want to help. There's an idea to organize what Kevin Moran did, as you know from being there, Gene, you know, he got the Glee Club to pick up litter along the streets and the Clean Communities Grant of $600 that they received. They donated to the VFW, so they had the money to pay the county the fees to have the parade, and people are latching on to that. And, you know, if you really think about it, our Clean Communities Grant is there for that very purpose, and what a great thing if you could engender civic groups, 10, 15, 20 of them, each to do a street and pick up $500 or $600 and donate it, I think it would go a long way to help. So Bob Constantine is the man, and I do know that there are several other residents in the community that were talking about a meeting this Sunday at the VFW. So if you want to have contact, Bob, I'm sure he'd be glad to tell you. My understanding is that the meeting is to give a rundown as to exactly what the situation is financially, what kind of things are happening. There's a golf tournament that's being sponsored by the VFW for June the 11th, I believe. And so, call me or stop by. I'll give you the number tomorrow.
Okay. And is it also, besides the sewer issue, was also damage from, was it, was the storm?
Well, yes. The answer is yes. There's damage to the building, but the real thing there, and of course, like anything else, there's an easement across that property given to the state and New Jersey Department of Transportation for the drainage off of Route 94. That storm drain has been malfunctioning since Irene, and they refuse to clean it out. As a result, the retaining wall that stands between the VFW and Terry's Tire Place is now beginning to bulge. The septic system, which is under the parking lot, has now begun to buckle, and so, frankly, because of a refusal on the part of the state, and I'm told by talking to the people at the VFW, that Senator Oraho has been involved in it and hasn't been able to move it for whatever reason, but that has generated tremendous damage to the property. So the fact of the matter is, they have several problems there, but yeah, storm damage was part of it.
Okay. That's what I told them. I said I thought it was also...
Yes, yes.
Other than that, I have also had questions whether or not Vernon will be getting a new fire marshal, and I knew that you said you'd put out for interviews.
If I may, we advertised for resumes. We've received 12 resumes. In fact, Mr. Zuckerman and I both have been through them. Probably by the middle of next week, we will be setting up interviews. I anticipate that before mid-month, we should be making a hire.
Okay. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor? Motion made by councilmembers Cadeesh and Rizzuto, second by councilmember Wetzel and All who are in favor?
Aye.